Call tonight's meeting to order. Roll call, please, Lisa.
Mrs. Telepoff?
Here.
Ms. Burnett?
Here.
Ms. Chapman?
Here.
Mr. Barrett?
Here.
Mr. Miller? Ms. Palmer? Mr. Pickery?
Here.
Mr. Rose?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Okay, we'll stand for the pledge.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the repeating justice of our own.
I'd like to make note of executive session, January 24th, 2022, for contract negotiations, and February 21, 2022, contract negotiations and personnel. I will open it up at this point to anybody from the public who wants to speak regarding any items on the agenda tonight. Right then, then we'll move on to student representatives. Cochranton Junior Senior High Schools, Zoe Hanson and Kendall Rose.
Hi, Zoe couldn't join us tonight, so it's just me. Our girls' basketball team won their first round of playoffs this Saturday against Mercer. They play West Middlesex and Sharon this Wednesday, and they play again on Saturday against a team yet to be determined. This past Friday, the boys' basketball team officially ended their season after playing Kennedy Catholic at Farrell for the first round of playoffs. Their overall record stands at 11 and 12. Our wrestling team currently stands with four wins and two losses so far this season. They had to cash tonight and go to Cambridge Springs on Wednesday. We had 10 wrestlers qualified for the District 10 tournament, and we had two section champs out of those 10 wrestlers. And eight wrestlers qualified for the Northwest Region Regional Tournament, and we had one District 10 champ out of that. Our ASL team went to regionals earlier this month and brought home nine medals. And the juniors and seniors of STEM finished their four-week STEM camp for the elementary school students on the 16th. It was successful and ran smoothly. Both the teens in STEM and the kids hearing about STEM learned some valuable things about science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. As far as school events go, we don't really have a lot going on right now. However, we've begun putting in work to put on an effective fundraiser for the American Heart Association in the upcoming couple months of the school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Meadville Area Senior High School, Kate Emili and Megan Lewis.
Hello. Hello. Okay, so our winter sports are wrapping up, with each of our sports teams succeeding in their own rights. The end of the winter season also means that the spring sports are just around the corner, with March 7th being the opening day of the season. Our spring sports teams include boys volleyball, softball, baseball, track, and tennis, and players and coaches are looking to have a safe and successful season to close out Meadville Athletics for the year. And speaking of sports, Kwon Simmons, a junior at MASH, ranked 17th in the state for indoor track and went to state this past Sunday. He returned a medalist, placing seventh in the triple jump event, so yay, Kwon. And moving to other extracurriculars, MASH Key Club cleaned and redecorated the teachers' lounge on February 24th to show our deep appreciation for incredibly hardworking staff. We are also having a bake sale on March 2nd, or tomorrow, to raise money for the Yolanda G. Barco Oncology Institute.
National Honor Society will be inducting new members on March 10th. Prior to the inductions, the current members will be helping the new members that have been selected rehearse for the ceremony, just going like what to do and where they're going to go during the ceremony. MASH Forensics Team, the speech and debate hosted their meet, and they ended up winning. Everything was run smoothly, and good job to them. To conclude, the student government held their winter week from February 7th to the 11th, which consisted of different themes for each day that corresponded with the winner sports. An example of this would be Sweat Suit or 80's Day for the wrestling team. That week was chosen due to sports having home games or meets during that week, and the student body was encouraged to attend. And then Friday wrapped up Fine Arts, Fine Arts Friday, to celebrate the arts and musics programs of MASH. The band performed in the hallway their music that they do for the morning. That's all we got. Thank you for having us.
And last will be Meadville Area Middle School, Chelsea Osterkamp and Isabella Thorson.
Hi, I'm Isabella Thorson. We are almost halfway through the third quarter, looking forward to warmer weather and spring activities. This year's junior high wrestling team was a young, inexperienced team. We did well learning the sport and building our team. We still have two students going on the postseason junior high state qualifier this Sunday, February 27th, Jacoby Thompson and Radus Day. If they place in the top three, they will move to the PJW Junior High State Championships, which will be in Johnstown, PA during the weekend of March 4th through March 6th. And this year's spelling bee, the first place winner was Mia Reese, younger siblings to the previous champions of both the spelling bee and GOBs. In second place, the winner was Luca Palonca. All spellers did well and exemplified maturity and courage on the stage. In student council news, we celebrated Spirit Week, January 31st through February 4th. February 14th, students were red or pink for Valentine's Day. We are going to be collecting items that the Meadville Lions will be sending to the USS Bang Bridge as part of their Adopt a Sailor project. The beloved community fair kicked off February 23rd. Students will be watching the video and filling out their passports in advisory class.
We will move on to approval of minutes. Be it resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the following minutes of the regular board meeting of January 24th, 2022, and committee of the full meeting of February 21st, 2022, and I need a motion.
So moved. Second.
Jeff?
And Kevin?
Okay. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And then on to committee reports. We will, first, curriculum, Melissa Burnett.
Okay, this is going to be the first reading of jewelry and metal smithing curriculum grades 11 through 12 at the Meadville Area Senior High School. So we're not doing any voting tonight, it's just our first meeting.
Thank you. And extracurricular, Holly Chapman.
Approval of the PMEA events. It has been resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the following PMEA events. Meadville Area Senior High School, PMEA, All-State Orchestra Chorus, Pocono Manor, Pennsylvania, April 6th through the 9th, 2022, at a cost of $5,198.46. Crawford and Junior Senior High School, PMEA, All-State Band Chorus, Pocono Manor, Pennsylvania, April 6th through the 9th, 2022, at a cost of $5,430.20. And that is on attachment 4, if you'd like to look at it. And then, motion to approve?
And a second?
Second.
Who is that, second?
Melissa.
Melissa, okay. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Jeff Rose, finance, please.
Resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the following financial activities. The Treasurers report for January, financial statements, and the payment of bills, and ISO move.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Our audit, resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby accepts the 2021 independent audit in two minutes, and ISO move.
And I need a second. Questions or comments? Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Then on to personnel. Be it resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the revisions to the health and safety plan, and I need a motion.
So moved.
Jeff? And a second?
Kevin, I think.
Kevin? Thank you. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Be it resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the Building Managers Agreement for the period of July 1, 2022, through June 30, 2027, and I need a motion.
So moved.
And a second?
Aye.
You, Holly? Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Be it resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the following personnel schedules, A, B, C, D, E, G, H, and I, and I need a motion.
So moved.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Second?
Ryan.
Ryan, thank you. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So at this point, I will turn any comments over to Mr. Washington.
Madam Chairperson, I don't have any comments, so.
Okay. All right, then we will now open up comments to the public, and I will just go off of this list in order of that they signed in. And when you come forward, please state your name, where you're from, your address, and what you would like to speak about. So the first person on the list is Amy Oviat. Did I say that correctly?
Yep. My name is Amy Oviat. I live in Meadville, and I have three children in our school district, one in eighth, one in sixth, and one in second. I'm here today to discuss class sizes. In the past, the elementary schools kept up with maintaining small class sizes, especially in grades K through 2. Unfortunately, in recent years, I've noticed this is no longer a priority for our district. This is especially concerning for our younger kids in K through 2. Currently at First District, we have two rooms for kindergarten and first grade. This is troubling since both classes only have 24 students in them. Our classrooms used to be kept between 15 to 18 students. Our teachers can only do so much in a classroom, and the bigger the numbers mean the teachers can't spend quality time with each student. Smaller class sizes benefit students and the teachers. Teachers have more flexibility to use different instructional approaches. Teachers have more time to teach because there are fewer discipline problems, and teachers have more time to cover additional material and use enrichment activities. According to the STAR Project, smaller classrooms result in increased academic performance of children in primary grades, particularly of poor and minority children. The STAR Project also showed small classrooms have the greatest impact in the earlier grades, which are K through 3. The National Education Association states that class size reduction allows teachers to recognize and intervene with student learning problems more efficiently. They also state that small class sizes lead to higher student scores, and another positive impact is higher teacher morale, which will then translate to higher rates of attendance, reduced substitute costs, and less teacher attrition. The HEROES study found that students in smaller classes in the early years take more advanced classes in high school, and they are more likely to graduate in the top 10% of their class. Larger class sizes causes the students' school experience to suffer. Our early primary teachers are the first to shape the students' learning experience. Let's make it a positive one, one where the teachers are not stressed with dealing with behaviors and managing the classroom. We need the experience to be where teachers have been able to establish positive relationships with the students and the parents. I am asking that the school district make the smaller class sizes in grades K through 3 a priority, and if adding additional classrooms is not feasible, please consider hiring classroom aides for those grades you cannot reduce the class sizes, because I feel that will help alleviate the teacher's stress and help them help students who need help. Thank you.
Thank you. Great, next is Liz Bogumi.
Hi, I'm Liz Bogomel.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I live in Meadville, and I also have three boys that attend in our district, 6th grade, 5th grade, and 2nd grade. I kind of went back and forth about whether or not to speak, as you can see, my notes are on the back of the agenda for today. My biggest concern for my kids and the kids in the district is the lack of consistency. I feel like there's been so many things that have happened that are inconsistent in our country in the last two years, that it's made it very hard also to gather consistency for our kids in the classroom. The past two years, we've been in and out, homeschooled, hybrid, out of school, in school. This year's been fundamentally normal, if you will. However, there's still a lack of consistency. I have a son, my 2nd grader, is in the SMART program. We have so many programs available within our schools, which are fantastic, that's a bonus, a positive. However, there's a lack of communication among the SMART program facilitators and our principal and educators, our teachers, in the schools. For example, my son in 2nd grade, his main problem or issue, if you will, is when he transitions. Knowing that that's a big complication for him and brings out the worst behaviors of his, he was switching from an average math class to a higher math class, and no one in the SMART program was made aware of this. It was one of his worst days this year, and there was just no communication. And that set off a two-week timeframe for my son to not be able to get back to normal. Another thing is, my 5th grader, I reach out to the teacher for help, and there is just a lack of guidance. He is struggling with his grades. I have reached out, I have emailed, I've had three in-person meetings with them this year alone, and my son is still struggling. I ask if there's stuff I can do with him at home. I'm told that he's not allowed to bring a social studies or a science book home, so there's no homework. Well, if there's no homework and there's no way for me as the parent to help him to improve his grade, then he's set up to fail, in my opinion, and that's not acceptable on any level for me. It's not acceptable as a parent to not be able to guide and help my children. The same thing happened to my 6th grader last year, who was in 5th grade. They are two opposite end of the spectrum kids as far as learning and behaviors, and they were met with the same reluctance. I've probably met with these teachers a handful of the time. The principal joined us for a couple of the meetings, and nothing is changing. I have asked if he needs to be set aside in a different room to do a 504 plan. We are set up for that if necessary, and I'm told that that will not help him. So I'm just really stuck, and it just seems like there's a lack of consistency and a lack of communication on lots of levels. And it leads me to be frustrated, my son to be failing in some classes where I'm told I can't help him. And I do get a quick reply from the principal, which is fantastic. However, it seems after that, there's just nowhere else to turn, so I'm stuck. The other issue is when there's punishments. My two younger kids have behavioral issues, and so we're set up for that. They know this, I've again met with them several times, I'm a pretty proactive parent, and the principal or the punishments are just not consistent either. I know of an instance where there was a physical altercation, nothing happened to the kids, they went back and got sent back to class. My son said a "your mom" joke, which was not appropriate by any means, but he was suspended for two days. So I'm.
Can you just, you're at your three-minute.
Oh, yep, that's fine.
You can wrap it up.
No, that's okay. And I mean, really, it's just a lack of consistency, and I just, I'm a solution-based person, so I would just like to find a solution that would help not only my children, but everyone's children in the county.
And next is Darcy McKinley.
Good evening. My name is Darcy McKinley. I don't have any kids in the district, but I am a teacher, a kindergarten teacher at First District Elementary School. On Monday, September 20th, I found out that I was suffering from osteomyelitis. However, what you haven't heard was that the school nurse who we share with Second District Elementary not only encouraged me to go straight to the emergency room, but she also drove me to the ER, where I would, where I probably would have suffered a cur- I just got back to work three weeks ago from this, so I'm really sorry.
I'll stand right.
Sue instantly became my advocate when I was in the hospital. If it wasn't for Sue Mulvey being at school, I probably wouldn't have gone home and probably would have not be here today. Having a school nurse on site saved my life. Now, this is a testimony of a teacher. We have students on meds, those who suffer seizures and have allergies, that we as teachers do not have the training or that registered nurses do. We rely heavily on nurses daily when our students come into the classroom with colds, temperatures, lice, et cetera. Right now, First and Second District schools share a nurse. Sue Mulvey is at our school in the morning and at Second District in the afternoon. Many things can happen in those three to four hours when she is not there. If an emergency was to happen, Sue would have to go clear across town to help that child. If we had a school nurse right there in our buildings, she could be at the incident within seconds rather than minutes. First District now has 338 students. Sue sees approximately 20 of those kids in the morning, but when she was there four days, it was between 40 and 50. So the kids that she could see in the afternoon are not being seen. Our kids are not getting the care they deserve from our district. I do not know the answer to this problem, and I don't know how to solve this dilemma, but I do know that this is a needed service, and it needs to be available to all students all day.
Thank you. Next is Kathy Graham.
My name's Kathy Graham, and I'm from Carlton. And I have a letter here from, there was a question, I guess, last week about our assessments. So I talked to our tax collector, and it's all explained in this letter, which I will give you, of how it all came about, and why of the increases and stuff. But mainly, I was wondering if and when the decision will be made, what we're going to do about the formula and the taxes, since ours was going to raise again the $127,000, which puts us up over $900,000. Because I know, I realize there's a fine timeline here with when you vote on it. We have like March, April, and May, and then June it'll be final. So I hope somebody's looking into our timeline, so we can talk about that next month.
Now, there is nobody else signed up to speak. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak at this time before we move to the board? Right then, we will now move to board comments. Kevin?
I do have some, and mine in particular in regards to Mrs. Graham's comments. And I did send an email out to the board, kind of asking that we'd open up for discussion, but we've chosen this option. I took it upon myself after last Monday night's committee meeting, when Mr. Neal spoke to us and showed us the timeframe on the proposals that we could go to collecting taxes. So I called STEB, and I spoke to a lady named Renee, and just had a little chat with her on the reassessments. Crawford County was 1971, Mercer County 1974. She had suggested one avenue you could do would be a ratio change, which we all know that our assessed values are at 75%, or our taxation's at 75% of the assessed value. You could do a ratio change and take it to 100%. She wasn't sure of all the details, but I'm throwing that out. A lot of our properties are assessed at a low market value, and until that changes hands, it doesn't change the value. And I know in particular, in Kathy Graham's situation in French Creek Township, it's a lot of farmland, and a lot of that farmland's assessed at a low value until it changes hands, so then you start seeing a property that's assessed at $200 or $300 an acre for farmland going at $4,000 or $5,000 an acre, now you start seeing that market value change. And upon probably a 45-minute discussion with her, it led to the numbers that we were looking at, and Guy can correct me if I'm wrong, but this is coming from her, that are basically almost two years old before they hit our budget. Because the numbers that we had last year in 2021 are the numbers we're going to be using in 2022, which were probably done in the late of 2020. So you're almost way outdated before you get to your budget. And our last housing market crash was in 2008, is what she had seen, and an average of a four-year recovery upon that. So then I asked her, I said, well, how do I get to my next questions, and that is, what's the timeframe on these potential changes on collecting taxes? And she gave me a name of Benjamin H.A.N.F.T., and he is in the Division of School Subsidies, which Guy is in contact with. And she said, just tell him code 24 PS6-672, period 1, which means cross county lines, on things that we can do. So, in talking to him, yeah, you can make the switch, but PDE needs a lead time, and a lead time to come in, and Guy, you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but recalculating base, and getting the numbers to Guy, and Guy getting the numbers back to the state to get them into the formulas, so that they have them done by May 1st, or at least the first week of May, so that we can be looking at a tentative budget that has that new collection process in place. So, and he also wants to make sure that the system is going to work. He also mentioned that he could do a model year of the current year versus what we're going into, and I don't know whether he got in to Guy with that or not, but he could kind of look at this year, how we collect, and then change that to what it would look like if we did it the other way. Basically, the timeframe to be ready would be the first week of May with everything done. So that takes it to the complex issue to change methods. Guy needs to correct numbers in the back and forth with PDE. So we, as a board, if we're looking at changing this process, and I'm calling it option four, which everybody was paying, I believe, at the 1657, between now and our next meeting, I think we're going to have to come back, and I can be corrected if I'm wrong, but let Guy know that that's the process we want to start going, so that he can do his legwork, because it's not going to be just sitting a couple of days doing what he has to do. You've got a guy in Harrisburg that's also doing other school districts that's got to work with us and work us in on this change. I asked if there was any kind of info on those eight school districts that use the new system that we're looking at, and he really didn't have any input on that, so that's something that we're going to have to ask Guy to follow up and get back to us, is what happens in those eight years after. And if I recall, Guy had mentioned that it was eight school districts, but one was in from 2008, if I stand correct. He also kind of heeded the warning that you've got to get your community involved and onboard with you, because you're going to hear some terms that they are going to think they're being reassessed, but it's not reassessed, they're going to be reassessing the values because they must be mutual on the, between the counties. So you've got to look at that. Now, here's some of the clingers. And the biggest clinger is, if there is a county-wide reassessment, whether it's forced by potentially the city of Meadville, who is looking at a push for a reassessment, we will revoke back to the current system we're on, no matter what. We can change any one of those options, but if there's a county-wide reassessment, we revoke back to the initial system that we're on now. Another bad thing, there's a reassessment done, we've switched, now we go back, we can't benefit from that county-wide reassessment until the second year. So the first year, we're held mutual, there's no profit to be made, is how he stated it, and basically means we can't raise taxes in the first year. Which then leads me to the next thing that Guy has mentioned numerous times, and especially last May, is the financial cliff that we're heading towards in 2024, 2025, if I'm correct on those years, where we're $5 million short with no debt service. So I hope that some of this information is enlightening you, that when we come back in March, we really have a major discussion on what we want to do with this tax collection. Do we stay where we're at? Personally, I don't think that's the fairest way to go. I mean, we've got some township out there that's been hammered almost ridiculously over the years, and just because of that STEB formula and cross-county line. years, and just because of that STEB formula and cross-county lines. But it just doesn't affect them, it affects all these other 89 districts that are in the same boat. One district pays a heck of a lot more than everybody else. So if we're going to pursue it, I would like to see it on the agenda for next month for discussion, but giving Guy direction that we're looking at doing that Option 4, if that's the one we're looking at, so he can start his legwork. Because I think much beyond March is going to be a tough task for him, and I'm not speaking for him, but he can speak for himself, but to get all that stuff done and with PDE and Ben or Benjamin having to get that all back and forth. And I just want to caution us, some of the side effects that could happen, we could be getting some double whammies in here if we do switch. I'm not using that as a reason why not to, because I'm kind of in favor of doing the switch. I think it's the most beneficial way to go. Everybody's paying the same. But also caution us that if there's a county-wide reassessment, we could be right in the middle of changing systems. Now we're going to go back because we got to go back under the regulation or law or the act, and now we're into this financial cliff all at the same time, and we can end up into a mess. So, I mean, that's where I'm at. I just wanted to tell the board, that's what I found out.
Kevin, I thank you for doing that research. So, I mean, we chose to do this this way, but we can still have a discussion. That doesn't mean we can't have a discussion, Kevin. So it's open for discussion. And he's right, we need to know what direction to go in terms of doing that. And I'd like to hear some feedback if you'd like to, or if you'd like to take it all in.
I have a comment on it. And just to let everybody know, Kevin called me and clued me in on some of this a couple nights ago, so I maybe already had a little time to think it over, but some of it was from just last Tuesday, though. When we looked at that chart with the $30,000 mean home paying in Crawford County $1634 and going up to $1657, and then the folks in French Creek Township, I'm too embarrassed to say what their number was, and then it would go down to $1657. I can't, in good conscience, vote against going to the other plan. I mean, I just cannot, I can't even fathom, and my taxes aren't going to go up just $23. I own farmland. Not a lot, but enough that, mine's not that $30,000 mean deal. I mean, mine's going to go up a bunch, and I cannot imagine, I mean, I've talked to people, but I did not realize that it was that bad. The other comment I have, and Guy explained to us that almost all the districts that cross-county lines are on the program that we're on. I think what Kevin found out tells us why. It's not because it's better, it's because it's the default position. That's where you're at if you don't do anything. It's just the way, you know, that's the default. If we get a county-wide reassessment, they put us back to that, well, that doesn't mean it's better, it's just easier for somebody else. So, you know, I'm definitely in favor of, I mean, at this point, unless somebody can give me a really good reason not to, I like to see, is it, Guy? Fourth one on the chart?
Fourth one on the chart. But I just want to clarify, it only defaults back there if we do the, not we, whoever does this county-wide assessment.
County-wide reassessment. It will automatically revoke, you don't have a choice.
And in regards to that, if there's a county-wide reassessment, then values are...
Your values are going to go up, yes, more likely.
So then we wouldn't be real bad off not being able to make a move on taxes if we needed to.
You've got to understand that a county-wide reassessment for us is going to cost a bootle of money for the county. It's projected $5 million, just to start. Because of the timeframe, the last one was done in 1970s, to get everything back up to where it should be in a fair market value, that's the projected timeframe, or the projection on dollars, and that came right from Renee at STEB. She says, a lot of counties that have gone on to county-wide reassessments have a five-year plan in place, every five years they relook at it. It doesn't cost nearly $5 million. You may be looking, and a few properties are changing hands, and so they have a better control on it. But because we're so far out, I mean, 1971's a long time ago, you're faced with that, okay, who does it? Who pays for it? You know, your county's going to pay for it, and anybody sitting in the county commissioner's chair would probably be booted out by doing it because most people don't want to pay more in taxes. I don't want to, but on the other hand, fair market value, and everybody would be paying the fair price, whether it's a senior citizen living in their house who's just being able to pay their taxes and letting everything else go, the upkeep or whatever on that property will now have a fair market value, maybe theirs will come down in order to get it down. But I'm not going to sit here and say we need a county-wide reassessment. I think the city of Meadville may be pushing that issue and forcing it down the road.
Would it be possible to talk to city council, explain what you guys are facing, and ask that they hold off on what's going to be causing that reassessment? I mean, maybe they're not aware that by doing what they're doing, that would have such a negative impact possibly over here. Maybe just the two need to speak with each other. Maybe that would be a possibility?
Anything's an option, yeah.
Right. I mean, just a thought there, so that way it wouldn't, if they know that you guys are trying to figure things out, get things fixed, so it's more fair.
See, all I wanted to do is bring it to the attention of the board, because I know Ben told me he did not tell Guy that. I mean, he said, he goes, I don't think I told Guy that if there's a county-wide reassessment, what happens? And I wanted the board to be made aware of that, that we could be, we're like in between the rock and the hard place here, what do we do? I mean, I'm in favor of doing what Jeff's saying, do that Option 4, but also, it doesn't matter what option we choose, we can stay where we're at and do nothing and let the county-wide reassessment happen, but even if the county-wide reassessment happens, two years from now, when we're faced with this, is it two years, Guy? 2024, 2025 financial cliff?
25, yes.
We're going to be right in the middle of a double whammy. $5 million short and not able to even raise revenue for that first year of that reassessed value. So if it's a city or a town, whatever's forcing it out, we could end up not doing anything on our taxation, but still in that same boat. I'm not afraid of going back onto the system for a year if we have to. I mean, yeah, we're going to have some penalties out there, and French Creek Township is probably going to be one that's going to get hammered. It might be us up here that's going to get hammered. We don't know that until we get there. But on the other hand, maybe a county-wide reassessment won't happen, but we're still going to have the financial cliff. It's going to come.
Right, yeah.
So we've got to look at that. And I don't want to be the bearer of bad news, but we've been hearing about it for a while, and I think we've got to start thinking outside, as like somebody gave me to think outside the box. And Guy, he did an excellent presentation when he went upon and brought those back to us, those options, and kind of gave us some insight of what we could possibly do. I mean, I only knew there was a different option, I didn't have my hands on it. He beat me to it, which I applaud him for what he's done. I mean, I'm not here drilling that Guy is a bad guy. Guy's a good guy, and he has done a good job on what he has done. And I just did some digging around because I was really concerned about making sure we meet deadlines, and he didn't actually have an actual deadline, but I knew one would be coming. But I just got questioning something, we need somebody else, and this is what I found out. So, I mean, that's kind of where I'm at.
On that there, 1971 is a paper date that a reassessment was done, but anytime that you get a building permit or a demolition permit, it triggers a reassessment.
On particular properties, yeah.
Since 1971, how many of the properties within Crawford County has had a building demoed where they got a permit to do it, or an addition added to it that they got a permit? Because then those would have been reassessed. So to say county-wide reassessment, a lot of those properties probably already has been reassessed.
At some point or another, there's been some assessment, reassessment.
My house was built since, you know, in 1998, I built my house. So, you know, I mean, a county-wide reassessment shouldn't really, you know, change mine too much. You know, in fact, most of the houses on my road, I think, or half of them are probably, you know, since 1971. So...
And who knows what the county-wide reassessment would do? It may not change the values a whole lot, and it could change them a lot. You won't know until they actually get into it, but it's just the fear of higher taxation.
I think there's only three houses on my road that's been there since before 1971.
So, I mean, that's what I've got on that.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Option 4 was the one, the only one that lowered French Creek's taxes. Is that right? Is that the option?
That's correct.
Okay.
Is there anybody else who wants to make a comment? Because then I think, I mean, we were going to bring it up again in March, was my understanding in our last committee meeting, that it would be on the agenda, so...
But we also have a feel where we can go now.
I mean, I honestly think we need to, at that meeting, officially tell Guy this is what we're looking at.
Yeah, so everybody come back with their thoughts and where we're going to go at the next committee meeting.
I would, when you put it on the advertisement, that we are going to be discussing our, rather than just act, our options that we're looking at so that everybody's aware.
Would that be March 21st or March 28?
21st would be the committee meeting.
Yeah. Will it be that one or...
It will be the committee meeting.
Okay.
All right. Any other board comments on anything else?
I do have one more, not relating to taxes. I'm just going to say that, like, back, I know we didn't move on putting it into the schools, but I surely wish we reconsidered the protocol without changing the American Heart Association's protocol, but having it in the toolbox if we really needed it. And that's where I'll leave it.
Anybody else? All right then.
I would just like to say that I'd like to listen to the nurse that presented last week, or I don't think last week.
I can hear you.
She wants to hear Sue Mulvey comment.
And Beth.
It was Beth.
Or Beth.
Beth Knight was the nurse that was here.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I would defer to the professionals.
Oh, is that what you're saying? Okay, that's what you're saying, right. Ryan, I couldn't hear you through the mask. Okay, okay, no problem. He was saying that he would defer to the medical assessment.
Okay. All right then. No further comments. Be it resolved, it being no further business, this meeting is adjourned at 6:12 PM, and I need a motion.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I didn't hear a second, was it, Ryan?
Wrong.
Yeah.